Are we good?
Uh huh.
And is the reporter on? Okay, this is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Planning Board. Adequate notice, this meeting has been given pursuant to provisions of the Open Public Peteings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice, the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press and was also sent to the Two River Times and Starlet. That notice is also posted on the Bolton Board of O Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. The copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file at the office of the board president. The copy of that notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes. Roll call please, Sam.
Mr. Borrelon.
Mrs. Bush.
Here.
Mrs. Pat.
Here.
Mr. Noel.
Here.
Mr. Violo.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
Nicka.
Mrs. D'Angelo here.
Mr. Burkhart.
And Mr. Leeder.
Here. Please join me in the question.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Okay. So for new business tonight, we have the M and M application. We're going to get to that. We're going to move to a couple of administrative items. And I also want to have a couple of comments before we start with regard to protocols. This meeting was noticed to happen in person before the most recent sort of talk over Omicron. And while we did speak to the applicant about potentially moving the meeting, we were not able to reach an agreement. And so we're proceeding tonight. What we've done to try to make sure that members of the public could have an interest in participating in the meeting is that we have notified the public and opened up this owl system, which I'm not familiar with. The owl system is being used by the council in Fairhaven and has been for some time. And so as I understand it, that the meeting is being broadcast through owl. And there is an opportunity for people that are viewing the meeting from that end to be able to raise hands and ask questions. They cannot see any exhibits that we'll be posting. And when it comes time for any statements or questions to be asked by members of the public through the owl system, we're going to have an opportunity for the applicant to be able to inquire, cross-examine anybody that's asking any questions. We're going to kind of wing it. We're doing the best we can do, but in the spirit of making sure that everybody that's interested in participating can participate, this is the best we can do at the moment. Looking ahead into 2022, we'll probably make some, you know, decisions with regard to what we're doing for live meetings. So it's possible if the meeting isn't concluded tonight, that the second meeting that we might have might be in a different format. And that might be in Zoom and we did do meetings in Zoom back in the day. It's too bad that we're headed back in that direction, but it may well be that that's how we wind up finishing things up. I guess the only other thing that I wanted to explain was that the notice requirements with regard to planning board applications require that notice be out for at least 10 days, right?
Correct, in a minimum, in advance. All right. I'm going to be asking, once we get to the app, whether or not we have jurisdiction of those things, I cover that on the record.
Yeah, and so there was a council meeting last night and there was some discussion about this. And so I wanted to make sure it was clear to anyone that's participating, the reason that we're proceeding. We obviously take everyone's health and safety very seriously, but we also take our responsibilities here at the planning board very seriously. And we recognize the applicant's interest in moving forward expeditiously. Hence we're here so well. With regard to administrative items, what do we have?
So the first item for administration is the approval of the November 16, 2021 minutes, which were distributed to the board prior to this meeting. I'd ask, does anyone have any comments or concerns for, for the record? Otherwise I will move to, to approve the minutes.
Yes, motion?
Motion.
Second. Make a second. Sorry.
Christopher.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Noel.
Yes.
Mr. Violo.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mrs. D'Angelo, yes.
Mr. Leeder.
Yes.
Now, the second, the second item for administration is the Washington Phillips LLC 101 Princeton Road Minor Subdivision. They've requested an extension of time to perfect that subdivision. And so I, I think we wanted to grant that, that extension, correct?
Would you like me to speak to that? Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, we approved the application. I don't have the specific dates in mind, but you have an obligation within a specific time within which to file your deed or perfect your subdivision approval. For one reason or another, they began to come up against time on it. They were in touch with us concerning outstanding items on their approval. And it turned out that sort of on the last day that they could file, they had actually completed everything. But when they touched base with the county for filing, the county said, well, okay, we understand your problem. We understand your difficulty, but it's not going to be filed in time. You know, we have a backlog. It simply isn't going to happen so that while fingers could be pointed as to whose that, whose fault it is, technically they were ready to file. County couldn't accept the filing and there is an exception under the statute. In a sense, what I refer to as the bureaucratic red tape exception, that where it's ultimately not your fault, but the filing didn't happen, you can grant an extension to that time. And the applicant in this instance is requesting, I guess, a one-month extension from this date within which to file their deeds. And they assured me that they'll be able to do that.
Sam? With that as a basis, so for your motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion to approve the extension for one month.
Yes.
Mrs. Bush.
Yes.
Mrs. Pat.
Yes.
Mr. Noel.
Yes.
Mr. Violo.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mrs. D'Angelo, yes. Mr. Leeder.
Yeah. Let's do the last member.
Move to table. Okay, so we'll table the third item, which is the review of our submissions until the end.
Okay, with that, we're ready to move forward with new business, the M and M application.
Do this, attend council. For your folks that may testify, I think they might testify, I think they think might testify, excuse me. Swear out. We saw we swore in front of the best one to give the word, it's true, the whole truth.
I did.
I know. We asked to do this first performance, we'll just call it here, to the council. I hear your testimony before this before, prior to your testimony, state your name loudly, spelling your name with some priority. Downline, if there's a jump back and forth, maybe you're not testifying, but somebody who has a question is talking. You have to state your name so that our recording connects that voice in case we ever need a transfer, okay? The church can't be swearing your professional thing or whatever. Excuse me, you need to swear your professional thing as well. I'll do that now. So I swear this one to the truth, all truth, I have the truth.
I did.
Same admonition to you by way of stating your name. The other housekeeping items, if I could, I have provided council with exhibit list of some, well, 26 applicant exhibits, some five. What I refer to as planning board exhibits. Councils agree that those are the exhibits. If you have anything else, we'll mark those as we go along. But so it's not to burden the record by reading some 32 exhibits. We'll reference those as we go along. And the only other thing I want to do, my secretary, can I confirm that we have jurisdiction in this matter, Mr. Pat?
We do.
Thank you.
Mr. Phil, please. Can we place your vote, can you?
What would you like? What do you need?
Normally you would sit, but it's okay to stand.
Like a chair?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, council. Doug Wolfson for the record, so if you don't know who I am, I represent M and M. Tonight represents the culmination of a very long, long process that involved a lot of lawyers, probably two, many lawyers, consultants on both sides, which resulted in a plan and a settlement agreement with the town that resulted in the application before you today. Essentially with designs like Susan Rule, Mr. Bardella, and a lot of people, so that, and I believe the subcommittee on the planning board that met on more than one occasion to make this project something that the town would be proud of and then work for the applicant as well. So this is part of a very, very long series of negotiations of a very long time. Thank you for allowing us to get to the finish line tonight. Well, with me tonight is Rod Hollbeck. He is the director of planning and engineering for M and M. He will go over the application. I don't know that he did this, and if he did, I could, Doug, did you confirm that we have jurisdiction over the board?
Yes, I did with Mr. Pat. I asked him, we got jurisdiction. She said on the record, yes, we do.
All right, thank you so much. And we have what presenting, actually one of the first I've experienced, a fully conforming application with no variances or planning waivers, largely due in part by the fact that it was designed essentially as a team project, essentially between the town professionals and their own. So as a result, it is consistent in all respects with your general awareness. I think the one waiver we're asking for is to not have the landscape plan signed by a licensed landscape architect, which just that they had a cost, given the size of the site, we were seeking waiver for that. And I believe, I want to put words in everybody's mouth, I believe there was no opposition from that, from the board's professionals. But that's pending for the board, for the board to grant that waiver, we wouldn't act to do what we're required to do. Our, we, the unnecessary expense, of course, it's the board's pleasure to share the board's. So with the chair's permission, I'll have Mr. Albeck come forward. We've handed out a couple of architectural elevations and exhibits that are not part of the actual record.
We will mark that as A28. As to one exhibit, two pages. I'm sorry, one exhibit, three pages.
Rod is going to give you a little rundown of the application. He will go through the most recent engineering and planning letters to confirm what has been done in order to clean up those things that were identified by your professionals worthy of attention, which we've done. I think let's see if you finished. If you have any questions, we'll be locked in there.
Mr. Chairman, where's the best location so that the board can see it as well as maybe the public or, you know, preference?
There are really several, several optimal locations. You can come back here, that standard, that would be fine. You could just kind of angle it at 45 degrees so that people from the audience may be able to just sort of come around and just sort of eyeball off so everyone could see. Sandy, do you have any extras I can give you to the numbers to publish?
It is.
Yes.
So far.
Rod, you're this morning, but tell a little about who you are and what you're involved in.
Sure. Again, my name is Rod Hollbeck, E U L E N B A C A. Director of Engineering, Planning and Development for the parent company, Edge of Properties, one of the partners in M and M Realty Partners at Fairhaven. I've been involved with this project since its inception, so to speak. Had meetings with the township as a representative of the developer. I'm here tonight as a representative of the developer. Just to talk about our application before this board. You will hear from our traffic engineer as well as our planner in a little while. But just in reference to the package that we gave you, or a little handout and the board that's up in front of the public is, the first page is just the existing sites aerial. It depicts the location of the former Sunoco gas station located on the corner of River Road and Cedar Avenue. I think everybody's familiar with the site itself. As Mr. Wolfson said, it's a collaboration over the years of meetings and agreements with the, with the borough to get to the point we're at today, as Mr. Wolfson indicated. We believe, based on the professionals' reports, we have the one waiver for the landscape plan to be signed by landscape architect. And again, it's the perjury of the board. We certainly could meet that obligation if we felt it was appropriate as a condition of any goal of the board shall grant us. But we're asking for that waiver for the added expense. So again, as indicated, there's an existing building on the site that was a former Sunoco gas station. I will tell you from an environmental cleanup, Sunoco is still a responsible party. There are, there is a groundwater contamination on the site that's being overseen by Sunoco. They're monitoring wells on the site and being done on the oversight of the NJDEP. The approved cleanup from the NJDEP is natural attenuation. So the monitoring wells just stay there and they get monitored over years until eventually the levels decrease enough where they can remove the monitoring wells. Other than that, everything else on the site has been cleaned up to the DEP standards. The second page of the handout is just a rendering depicting the proposed development. It's a three-story building. It contains approximately 4,250 square feet of commercial slash retail on the first floor that fronts on River Road. And there's a total of 14 residential units on the second and third floor, two of which will be the affordable units as part of the settlement agreement. The building is located pushed up front to River Road and towards the corner to gas, to take in kind of compliance with, with the township and borough is looking for as far as the street frontages. So the building is set up back and the parking is located behind the building as well as under the building. And if you look at the drawing that I have in front of you, in the upper right-hand corner is kind of an inset. It shows the parking underneath the building. So the retail is only so deep and then there's a double row parking or tandem parking behind the retail building that's for the residential units above. So the little picture inside in the upper right-hand corner shows how that parking functions behind the building. We do have an entrance driveway off of River Road. It's located on the north side or northeast side of the site. Goes around with a full access driveway located, pushed back as far from the intersection of Cedar Avenue and River Road as possible. There is surface parking along the rear property line, a trash slash dumpster enclosure located in the southeast corner of the site. We have provided some brick pavers. And when we go through the architectural, you'll see what we've done to enhance what we call the street frontage to allow for pedestrian activity as they walk down River Road to interact with the retail slash commercial component of the development itself. The residential entrance is off of Cedar. There's obviously an entrance from behind for the residents, but the main entrance for the residential for visitors is located off of Cedar. And we'll go a little bit more into the architectural as we go through the presentation. Mr. Chairman, I'm not, if it's appropriate to go through the letters now or ask questions of the first two exits before I get to the architectural? Or how do you want to?
So the letters are very long and the application is very detailed. So my suggestion would be that we can cover as much of the general information to get the board members acclimated to the site of the project. And then when you're ready to go through the letters, I want to engage directly with the board professionals. And I want to have the board members able to pull the letters up and then tick through it. Based on the fact that there were revisions to the plans, some of the issues were addressed and picked up in subsequent follow-ups from the professionals. But I want to be sure that the board members can track it all because there were some questions and some open issues that we may need to discuss. So, so I would, I would give us our bearings first.
Okay.
Before we start jumping into them.
Sure. So again, as indicated, there's retail. There's a line depicted on the drawing itself where it separates the retail component that fronts on River Road from the parking behind it. And then obviously the entire footprint. And as you go through the architectural, we'll see how the building steps as it conforms to the ordinance that is waiting for the site. But the upper level is located in this area here. It steps back from River Road, again, in accordance with the ordinance. That's basically the overall layout of the site itself as far as what we're doing for retail, the 4,250 square feet of retail slash commercial and the 14 residential units gives you the general overview of the site itself. Circulation and parking will be covered by our traffic engineer.
I have a question regarding material before you change the page.
Sure.
Your depiction shows brick pavers all around the building and your architectural show a lot of detail. Some of those questions were raised by our professionals. Are the things that you're going to discuss and the things depicted in these prints, are those decisions that have been made?
Correct.
Okay.
Obviously with, with a discussion from the board or important professionals, but from our end, that's what decisions we have made, proposed by the site itself.
Thank you.
Third page of your handout, picks the building elevation. There is two straight-on elevations. On the upper right-hand corner, you have a front elevation that faces River Road. And on the upper left, you have the side elevation or the side that faces Cedar Avenue. And then located below, on the larger picture, is the perspective view from the corner of River Road and Cedar. Again, as indicated, you can see on the perspective view how the retail commercials push forward towards River Road. And then there's a setback for the residential from the River Road as it pushes back for the second and third floor of the residential. And then if you locate it in the lower right-hand corner of the drawing, you can kind of see how the parking under is depicted in the back right-hand corner of how the parking from the rear or off of Cedar Avenue is accessed for the residential units itself. We provided, the materials that you see on here, as Chairman pointed out, is what we're proposing, similar colors. Obviously we're going with the earth tone color, but you can see most of the building itself, as depicted in your architectural handouts, calls for a series of cast stone, brick, hardy pipe or cement board, hard zone and what they call AZAC panels, which is just a amendment material for these cornice pieces and trims along there itself. We have the aluminum storefronts located on the first floor with the black metal around it. And that black metal is continued up through the residential components for the windows itself. There is a cast stone piece above each window as you go along and continued the same material and effect around the side of the building. This is similar for all four sides, for our materials. There's no change in materials, whether it's the rear side, what I call the, the left side or the eastern side of the building. All materials will be continued around. Again, the upper drawings, just give you an idea of what you're going to see from Cedar Avenue. The parking itself is well hidden behind the building itself. So I'm not going to see a series of cars there. And then you see the elevation from River Road with the aluminum storefronts facing on there. I know it will come up later in one of the letters about, we're showing a potential possibility of three tenants here based on the width of the commercial and retail space. And our architectural plans that were submitted, we don't show any demising walls on the inside. Obviously it's tenant-based. It could be three tenants, might be one tenant. It all depends on who you get, how much square footage you want to take. This is the worst-case scenario would be three tenants based on the width of the building. We don't find tenants take anything narrower than what we could fit in here for these three tenants. So again, if somebody comes in and wants to take 4,250 square feet, it would be one tenant. If I have three tenants, obviously to be more depict of what's here. But the storefronts themselves will be built as shown on here for future. If I get a 4,000 square foot tenant now and he leaves in two years or whenever, I got to be able to accommodate the three tenants. So a worst-case scenario would always be three tenants. The storefronts would be built that way to accommodate that for future development as we go through our leasing process.
So when you say worst-case scenario of three tenants, that's going to tie into parking when we get that for. Effectively, the parking analysis is going to contemplate no greater than three businesses in the retail section. And there's a commitment to not put five somewhere.
Yeah, I'll, Matt said we're talking about parking and that, but the square footage, 4,250 is a 4,250. So that's, that's unchanged. And but the commitment is it will be no more than three more tenants, which you can't fit in there. But now I'll go into that parking requirement.
So when you say worst-case scenario, you don't mean you're limiting the potential tenants to three. You're just saying as a practical matter, you can't, you can't really imagine that it would be more than three.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, my basic overview without going through professional lens, because obviously it's going to be a lot more detailed discussed as we move through those letters.
Are we going to go into the building and talk about the apartments themselves?
Sure. I'll have to put the site planners that you have up on the board if that's appropriate.
Sure. So let me ask you a question about the way that you design the exterior. There is a false front effectively with the, at the top of the front of the building, it doesn't exist towards the rear. When the building is measured in terms of height, where are you measuring to? And what is the purpose of that other than aesthetics?
Would it step back?
No.
Not following.
So as we look at the, at the front facade, right? And then, and you see how the building steps back on Cedar. At, at the front of the building, you have, I don't know where it is, something or other that's taller than the rest of the building. It's decorative in nature, at least it would appear that way.
Do I have the cornice, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. So, so this, so the, I guess the, the basic question is when you measure for height with regard to what the zone permits that you comply, where are you measuring from and where are you measuring to? And then what is the purpose of that beyond aesthetics?
Measuring from the average grade to the peak on all four sides. And this cornice is strictly decorative. But we look at the building's line of seven and see how it breaks on the front side. These cornices pick up a little bit higher than these carpets here, but it's minimal. It shows on the black and white architecture, when I go through this, where the roof line is. But these are strictly just the decorative itself, but the height is measured to the top.
Okay, so your maximum height is right here at the front and, and it meets the standard with regard to maximum height. So in the rear, it will actually be lower by a foot or two than the maximum height.
Correct.
Thank you. I'm going to suggest the board members pull out a set. That's very difficult for us to see, but if you, if you, if you share. The smaller versions are so much more useful. I get the big one, though.
With separate.
There's two sets. So, so these were swapped out. The initial submission was a place. So what is the, what's the signature block say in terms of dates? So we'll make sure.
These are entitled Proposals Building in Fairhaven. The delivery date, revision date, I'm sorry, 12/9/21. And it's P A1.
The purpose of this record, this is A18. This document, it's EP Design Services. Everyone got what they need?
Again, depending on A1, this is the ground floor plan or first floor plan. In front of the building, you see the 4,250 square feet of the storefront space in River Road with an additional door access front off of Cedar Avenue itself. You can see that there's the depth of the retail itself. There is a stair tower located on. There is a stair tower located on the eastern side of the building. As well as as I indicated earlier, on the right side or the western side of the building is the main residential lobby that contains. Main residential access, elevator, another set of stairs as you walk into the building to get up to residential buildings. Drawing also depicts is located in the rear underneath the building itself. You can see the steel plom that supports the upper building and this is where the tandem parking. Or under the parking under the building is located to the rear itself. So as I indicated, the residents will have a key file that would get them into the stairwell here from the rear. It's either one of these doors into the stairs or they can get into the lobby located on the eastern side of the building. But anybody visiting will have to use the main lobby here. So you can go inside and get the residents to buzz them in and get them up to. The units themselves. The residents will have access from the back to get into their units if they want to use the stairs. Or if they want to go to the main lobby and take the elevator up to their units itself. So that shows the basic equipment, the mechanical rooms are located on the western side of the building to serve as both the retail. And residential portion of it. That's located on the western side of the building itself. There's a jog located here as you work away. This is where the driveway, the single driveway coming into the site is located off of River Road. And then there's obviously your double drive mile back to here located with the perpendicular stalls located to the south or. Fourteen units.
How many affordable? The record, the the math comes out the two stone companies. As far as the cash contribution through fair housing to the, I think it's Habitat for Habitat or Habitat for Humanity will build. On a different location in lower and moderate income unit.
The second page again is containing your set, the same revision date, twelve lines, sheet eight two to the second floor plan. As I indicated, sort of on the right hand side, where the western side of the building, your main lobby, you come in. Stairway, elevator shaft, the internal hallway, leading down to the second stairwell. And then the units are fed off of the internal hallway. Units located in the rear, but units located in front of the building. You also see where you have this overhang or this step back, if you will, from River Road. When we go into negotiations, the county is important that the building has stepped back as it got taller. So you didn't have this three story building pushed up through the road. So we have this this step back which conforms to your ordinance. Approximately a nine foot step back. And then you have the residents you guys located behind there. This is sheet eight three, again onward revision date twelve nine twenty one. This is the third floor. Basically the same thing right now. You have your elevator shaft and stairwell located on the right hand side. You have your stairwell located on the western side. Again, units that are off of the main hallway or corridor. The same step back or step back, if you will, along the road, repeating is up. So the second, third floor off of the road is a continuous plan. Like twice a continuous plan as far as setbacks along the. The building to start treatment.
Can you tell us a little bit about the 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 mix of units? How do you size the units and how they function? I I know that the affordable units are a little smaller. How do you determine, you know, what that layout is going to be and and what is the overall mix in the building of the fourteen units?
Sure. Let me just talk about the how the units are sized. So obviously, you're correct, the affordable units are are smaller. There is a building code that requires what the minimum sizes are for these units. And that's what these drawings are based off of. So for example, if a minimum square footage for a two bedroom affordable is eight hundred and fifty square feet, we have to meet that. And we do meet those numbers. And then the market units are based on basically what's left. And then, you know, what you have there as far as square footages and then it becomes whether it becomes a one bedroom or two bedroom. And that's how the units are laid out. You know, you have seven units per floor. How am I going to pick these units in here? What are my affordable and what's left for market? What's my one bedroom versus two bedroom mix? So I know that. What my unit count is. And I'll give you those numbers in a second, but that's basically how the floor plan is derived from for the square footages.
So there are standards established in the state with regard to the size of the affordable units?
That's my understanding correct.
Okay, and so you meet that standard, but but by how much? And are there any other requirements in terms of functionality?
My understanding, and not the architect, my understanding of what I've known in the industry is. There's standards for requirement sizes for one bedroom, two bedroom, the three bedroom affordable. And then there's also requirements for adaptability for handicap or accessibility. Those are the only requirements I'm aware of that you have to meet.
Other than you have against to integral affordability. How that's marked. Your architect is sure to speak to this. Now, those are the answers. Those are the old codes.
Yes, our bedroom mix is on the market side, there's five ones, five twos, and on the affordables, it's one, 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 two.
I. I had been remiss, counsel. I don't recall specific, I thought there was a project developer. Are there specific expertise that he is testifying to?
I'm not following you, Doug. What was your question?
Is he testifying to specific, does he have specific expertise that he's testified to? I know he identified himself as being integral. From the beginning of this project.
Okay.
I don't know whether.
Engineer, he's testifying as the director of engineering for the company. So he's aware of all the company's history and practices. And the manner which things are designed and how they are, they all are under his supervision. But he hasn't signed the plans as a licensed engineer, but.
I just didn't know whether we should have.
No, we don't need to do that.
Okay.
At this point, we would go to however you do it, either by asking your professionals that we comply with their requests or we would go through the letters. The our normal course, but however you guys decide you want to do it, we'll do it. I I want to try and keep the information organized. So I I don't think that the professional letters are specific to particular specialties. I think that they're kind of a throughout. So why don't, can we do the testimony from the various experts and then do the lists at the end? However, the chair wants, normally at this point, Ron would go through and say, here's what we did to comply with what. Rich is in rules office asked us to do and that we would comply with everything or if there's a request for testimony, he would give it. So I don't, I don't know. So we can do that, but he's not going to be able to answer some of the questions. So I I'm okay with that. Are our professionals okay with that? Okay, whatever you want to do. It's your it's your board. Here's what I don't want to happen. I don't want to get into a seven page letter and just say, we did this, we did that, we did this. Because there's real substance in here and I think we need to make sure that we're working through it. And if it ties into one of your professionals who hasn't been introduced to us yet, I think it would be easier if we understood their their role and. The only thing they would testify to is the letter because it's a completely conforming application. So. And wherever you want to do it, I will try to do it. I don't want to be. You know, inefficient, but if you want our expert to testify that as to the traffic circulation, no problem. If you want this, if I want to say there are no variances and we meet all codes, no problem, but then we're done in five minutes, literally. So it seems to me the only thing that's helpful is for us to show you how we comply with what you've asked us to do. But you just tell me which way you want us to go and that's how we'll do it. I really know there's not what you said. So why don't we go forward as I ask?
Yes, my name is Matthew Sekler. That is S E C K L E R. I'm at Stonefield Engineering Design. Address is ninety two Park Avenue, Rutherford, New Jersey. Licensed professional engineer, professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Also recognized professional traffic operations engineer, licensed transportation engineers. Parts both examination experience accepted before over a hundred fifty boards in the state of New Jersey as a traffic engineer. He served as a traffic engineer on this project.
He testified to you being as a planner and.
Just trying to get.
No, I'm sorry. Any questions in the progress table? Except for credentials and traffic engineer. Matt, are you going to look at this project from the traffic design standpoint situation?
Yes.
Tell the board what your conclusions are.
Absolutely. And again, we prepared a traffic impact study. It was given June eighteen, two thousand twenty one. Included within that report, to go briefly through it, was data collection of the counts in June of twenty twenty one. Those counts included, definitely by the River Road and Cedar Avenue at the intersection that is before the other plan. In addition, we performed a trip generation analysis with which calculated the estimated number of trips that were coming in and out of the site. Should it be be developed in the manner that you see here before the board? This is a conforming application and a application that the use of density is consistent with the ordinance. That said, we did also improve in our traffic study a comparison of other permitted uses that would generate traffic that would be. You know, anywhere between double to ten times more traffic than what you'd be generating from a development like this. Typically residential buildings, which again, this is the majority of it is residential. Including the majority of parking is residential parking typically just sees traffic in the morning, evening hours. Other retail uses, you see kind of a spread of traffic throughout the day. Continuous kind of in and out. That said, our analysis showed that the intersection of Cedar Avenue and River Road would not see any significant changes in terms of its delayer level of service. Which again, this is a project that is a conforming application and a use that was considered as part of the 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 ordinance and the. And the settlement agreement. We do have two driveways on site. We have the entrance only driver on River Road and the exit and entrance driveway on Cedar Avenue. I believe there was some comments within this letter in addition to our working with the county in which we're looking to resolve. Some of the comments related to the access point of River Road. Again, it's an entrance only driveway. We believe that it is. Beneficial to the development, allows for easier circulation, or I'd say the ideal circulation. For certain vehicles, specifically a refuge truck to get to the the trash enclosure in the rear of the site. That said, if that driveway does not exist, the site could still work and operate in fine manner. And would still meet the typical standards for a site design. You just have a dead end aisle. A lot of time with dead aisles, when you're kind of going through a dead aisle and reach the end, you're looking for parking or you. Want to go back to another spot, you kind of have to do up in a K turn type operation. Again, not ideal, but again, it would be typical for other developments in the area. So again, no major disadvantage that. But again, we would like to have the driveway on River Road.
I'm sorry, your requests are way repetitive.
Yes, oh yeah.
You just, you call it a dead end aisle? Is that what you call it?
It would be, if you only have one means of ingress or regress, basically it becomes, it would be like a dead end aisle. You would have, you could only come in, you'd basically the only way out would be.
Turn around and go back out. Okay, is the, is the proposal to proceed with this development without this entrance to the extent that you don't get county planning board approval? Or or would that be something that would cause you to come back with some different ideas? So from a legal perspective, we have an application pending before the county. They had a county regulation that talks about distance between driveways. We have just a waiver of that. Especially since they approved it for the bank and for the Sibel code existed. We're confident that they will grant the waiver. If they don't grant the waiver and you've granted us an approval. And we don't litigate that question in the courts, as the chairman indicated, we wouldn't be required to come back. And show you a revised plan that would have eliminated that drive off. Those are the options. So you're not specifically asking us to approve it in the alternative, which was causing me asking questions about how it functions. If you don't get that approval, then you would come back to talk to us. If we don't get that approval and don't challenge their denial of the waiver in court and succeed. Then we would be required to come back because they would have fewer jurisdiction to us.
So again, just you and I are on the on the legal line of it. So there would would, there would not be an objection. If we condition the approval to make, to retain jurisdiction, just to get, just to retain jurisdiction, if the county did not grant that waiver. And if it was not litigated and we're not successful in getting that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know whether or not the board's entitled to do that as a legal matter, but if you want to.
I'm just asking you. That usually makes it easier.
I'm asking for a very specific reason. I want to know if you plan to build a building with the driveway or without. So that we can talk about what happens if it isn't there. The application is what you see, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry? The application is what you see. We're not asking for you to look at it in the alternative. As I said before, and as you pointed out, I think yourself, arguably. If the county says they won't allow that access onto River Road and either we challenge it and lose or we accept their decision, we must come back to you. That's why I think the jurisdictional issue is really a bit harrowing, but either way, we have to come back to your board.
In addition, just going again to internal site circulation. Drive aisles within the site, the two way drive aisles, twenty feet, twenty five feet wide, which is compliant with the code and typical industry standards. Parking spaces, the single stalls are nine by eighteen, nineteen by eighteen feet, which again is compliant. The tandem stalls, which again, you see in the top right corner, those are the residential parking stalls that are under the building itself. Those are nine feet by twenty feet long, again, compliant with the standards that are permissible under the ordinance. Parking is compliant as it relates to the number of parking spaces. I think there was a question from the. Board chair regarding the retail, retail in terms of the way this ordinance reads, it's by square footage. So it technically doesn't matter if it's one user or three users, it would still be the same calculation we need it. And it kind of makes sense, you know, if you have a larger space, you may have more employees. If you have smaller spaces, but three of them, we likely have the same number of employees just spread out under three separate users. But again, we are complying with the parking in terms of site distance coming in and out of the driveways. We meet the required site distance. Along Cedar Avenue, I believe at the intersection of River Road, we are providing a second triangle easement to that area. In addition to some other kind of roadway use along River Road as part of the kind of development plan. So overall, again, not only is this a conforming application from the zoning perspective, but from a. Dimensional standard in terms of the onsite circulation, it does meet the the ordinance as well as typical industry standards. There's one other comment about EV parking on site. We will be in compliance with the state ordinance that was passed. State statute that's passed fairly recently.
How will deliveries be handled to the retail?
Could have asked the operator in the last question about it, but again, I I believe most of the. Deliveries would be conducted within the parking field itself. Again, this is not the type of uses, not type of retail size that we get. Tractor trailers, anything that size typically it's box truck van. Type three, I would go to retailers that would fit within this size space.
Do the retailers have doors facing the rear parking area?
I mean, I don't know if you want Ron to address it, but there is a door that basically. Yes, Ron, back, the retail do have access to the back. Two retail, the, again, two retail, there's selected side have access to it. The corner only has a front door on Cedar and a front door on River because of that's where the lobby is today. Not proposing to put a back door there right now. The other two users do have back doors.
So the one that's on the corner, we think their deliveries from River Road.
They have access off Cedar as well. So truck can park in the back, come down the sidewalk and enter through Cedar. And not have to go on to River Road. Mr. Chairman, I'm looking at the floor plan now and if the board had a concern about that there is room on the left hand side of the lobby to put a door out back. The board felt that all three tenants could possibly have a back door.
So as we worked through all this some time ago, a lot of this information wasn't as clear as it is today. Anyone who's lived here for some time driving by a particular shopping center in Red Bank, which has the worst. Possible delivery structure where they park in the middle of Front Street. And so what I'm interested in understanding is what your plans are and how it's going to work. And and you say that they may not have a door to the rear. I I'm wondering how that functions. I'm also interested in how they get access to those doors based on the way the parking. Is is set up. I I don't have a good enough floor plan to see it and understand.
So I'm looking at, um, the ground floor plan A one. What was this stuff? Which is evidence of?
A H T.
A H T, okay. So we've got the, the stat parking. I'm looking at the unit to the, uh, to the east. Uh, and I see their door and their door exits to the rear. And is that a sidewalk along the back?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and, and when they take their deliveries from the, uh, travel lane in the back, wh- where do they go?
Well, they'll have to work through the, the parking field, the tandem parking spaces. They'll have to have access from the sidewalk. They'll have to head south through the parking field to get to where the drive aisle is located down the road.
So a- at a time where there were no parking spaces open, but it was full of cars, is there not a pathway that they would be able to access to get out, to be able to run a dolly or something?
Currently, you don't have one proposed.
Why are these aisles, um, the parking stalls twenty feet where the ones in the back that are open are eighteen?
That's the, I believe, the ordinance requirement by allowing us to have tandem spaces, I believe, the requirement was for those spaces to be open.
So this is the reality that I see, and I don't know this nearly as well as you guys, and I don't know if any other board members are interested in this particular subject matter, but what I seem to observe is if it's difficult, they'll find a path of least resistance. And so number one, if there's parking spaces that are open, I agree with you. They're going to go straight from A to B. That's easy. But I don't know how we know what that's going to look like, particularly since you have tandems. And particularly given where we are in twenty twenty-one, bill or twenty twenty-two with COVID, people working from home. I don't necessarily agree that people are going to be leaving in the morning and coming back. I think there's going to be cars.
There, there is space. Uh, we have to look and see if we can do that. There is space on the left-hand side. A clear space. Um, we can look and see if we can get from there over to the sidewalk. Right now, it's, you would have to go through the stairwell, which obviously is not going to work, but I understand your concern. I, I.
And I'm not saying they're going to use it. I really am not, but, but.
I agree with you.
Okay.
I agree with that.
So i- if in fact you could access from the, from the, the, the left rear and come down this sidewalk, come along on the outside and then have access, you'd get access to every one of that doors, right?
Exactly.
Is this going to be a grade, this sidewalk, or is this going to be elevated?
It's decorated.
Okay. So they could come straight through and straight up?
Correct.
Or they could come all the way around, but it's just.
They have to look for a ramp right.
Yeah, so that, it's funny, the bollards are exactly what I was thinking, if people are kind of trying to get as much space as they can get. Can you, can you look at this a little bit and kind of give, give us maybe an idea of what we could do to make some sense of this? I, I mean, would you have bollards here? I mean, would people be free to pull their car all the way up to the building and not leave this space open if it's not an elevated sidewalk?
Right. No, we would have to have protection there.
Okay.
You have to have one or the other. And even with the curb, we most likely would put bollards or something there because even with the six-inch curb, it doesn't stop the vehicle from hitting the building or hitting a person. So certainly not. Whether it's flat, whether recessed, flat with the pavement, or with six inches, we would still have bollards there for protection. Uh, and most likely, we would probably work with the engineer and put uh, more of a decorative, I don't want to call it a guardrail, because the guardrails, everybody's going to think of the highway, but something more decorative than just a yellow bollard or something, something more decorative that would stop a vehicle, but be more like a railing than it would be bollards along that walkway, if you will. The only I need to check is, chairman, to your point, and it's a valid point, is there's two, there's two doors located in that stairwell. I just have to check with the architects to find if that's a code issue, or if one of those doors could be eliminated and that stairwell be compressed, if you will, or moved towards River Road, to give enough room to have an access along the building to get to that wrong sidewalk along the back of retailers.
Okay. So that takes care of the two guys on the left, right? But that doesn't take care of, of the other one on, on the right. Um, is, is that just a matter of there not being a door here?
Yeah, I think when I looked at it, I said, there's enough room there. I, when I initially thought it was blocked by the lobby, there's enough room there to put a door in there. Uh, on the, I guess it would be the west-hand side of that lobby, provide a third door to get access to that corner. So you don't have that same situation where they only have front door deliveries option, give them that backdoor delivery option. And then everybody would be able to do service from the rear.
Look, I mean, if they can only access it from the front, then it's a double point. I mean, it's just, that's the reality. We sometimes, and, and you really don't want that to be encouraged in any way.
Understood.
Okay, so delivery trucks are coming in. Is, is it by design that they would enter off the River Road entrance and then move around? Is that the idea? Or, or could they come either way and it, it doesn't matter?
Well, the driveway upriver is just a in only, it's a one-way in, uh, by design, uh, and then you have two-way access on Cedar itself.
Right, but you wouldn't really want a truck pulling in off of Cedar because then they're kind of, we call it a dead end aisle, they're going to K turn out.
They're forced to do a K turn, correct. But to Matt's point, most of the deliveries we anticipate, this, this is a very small retail component, that's four thousand square feet. We don't expect anybody large in a, a typical box truck would pull through spaces here.
What if you got a pharmacy? Are these four thousand square feet not big enough for a pharmacy?
I don't believe a pharmacy would go here. No drive-through. Um, I think it's too small. At least no corporate pharmacy.
Correct. What was the user that you said would generate ten times more traffic? What, what, what kind of user would that be?
I mean, if you look at a typical, let's say, uh, Crowzers, you know, across the street, that generates, you know, significantly more traffic throughout the day than a, than a, uh, residential, residential building or other retail.
But we don't know what your retail uses are yet, right? So we're comparing that in terms of the residential, but no, we don't know the retail.
Correct. I was comparing it to the residential last time.
Do you know any of the retail users today?
We do not.
Okay, so it looks like a smart driver is going to come in off the River Road, is going to circle back, he's going to double park into no parking lane, he's going to unload. We're going to try and figure out a way to get a sidewalk, and if he can, he's going to cut through the park. How are residents going to navigate coming in and around and getting into these spaces? And how does tandem work?
So tandem works, it's the same tenant who will pull the inside out. No difference if you have a one-car garage and you have someone parking in the garage and someone parking in the drive. So no different than this, this.
Behind me, yes. Definitely good for relationships. So the, the retail parking in the rear is double striped. Is the parking underneath the building similarly double striped?
The, on the site plan, there are numbered spaces. Those are the ones that are for residents. The non-memored spaces are retail spaces. Those are the ones that are on the back. There's two spaces in the upper left-hand corner that are, will be marvin, for sure, um, for the residential. And then all, everything underneath has, Matt indicated, everything underneath will be assigned to the residential and then the retail is the balance of the certain spaces in the back.
Two of the spaces in the rear, uh, outside of the building are also for the residential?
Correct.
Okay. So, so what are the aisle widths of the residential parking? Um, a- and, and is there a standard that you're meeting?
Aisle width or parking space width?
Parking space. You have no aisles between them, right?
Correct, yeah, correct. So the, the, the parking spaces are nine feet long. Throughout, every parking space is nine feet long. And that is typical industry standard, the R S I S, the New Jersey residential site standards, is nine by eighteen is the standard space. Again, we went nine by twenty for the ten because that was requested by, as part of, uh, or, or required by, by the ordinance.
And nine's the minimum, right?
Correct.
And how do the columns, how many columns are there? How does it work to get around them? How wide are the columns?
The columns are two foot square, so a foot, uh, I'm sorry, eighteen inches square, so they're nine inches into each space. Uh, you see, there's a series of these two here, two more, and then two here. The other ones are at the end, they don't affect anything. Um, so again, uh, the cars can pull in there, and they're located areas where they don't affect, uh, doors. Uh, they're placed strategically for that reason, but they're, they're eighteen inches square, but they're centered on a strike.
At eighteen inches, they're, they're steel or they're masonry?
They're steel wrapped, um, you know, for aesthetics, they're wrapped in masonry, but they're steel columns.
So what happens to a nine-foot space when you take nine inches out of either side?
Well, it would only be one side because you don't have columns on either side of it. So it only affects, for example, the columns are located here, it only affects nine inches to this guy, he still has, he doesn't have column on the other side of them. So you're not taking nine inches from each side of them. These spaces here would lose nine inches on the one side, but they would lose on the other side.
Is there, i- is there any thought to clearstanding this with any things you don't have those columns? And is that part of what you've already considered?
Preliminary, we haven't really looked at the full design. Where do we take from a steel structure to the cantilever, if you will, or clear standard? I don't think the architects have, have worked that long, or we've, as far as I know, we haven't hired a structural engineer to get to the, the fully engineered structural drawings yet. I can certainly look into that.
What you want is usable spaces, right? If they're difficult to use, people wind up not using them. Um, and then the cars wind up somewhere else, and then these wind up, um, useless. Did you finish your presentation with regard to traffic?
I've got nothing else, and there's, there's questions.
Yeah, thanks. Did anyone else have any other questions regarding parking and such?
I, I guess I have a question about the traffic considering you don't know or you're not clear on what your, uh, tenants are going to be in terms of, uh, whether they're going to be shopping or restaurant. I'm, are, are all of those things allowed in this zone?
They, they have not asked for any non-conforming use. You are permitted in the A H zone, which is what this is in, I think, right? C A H zone, to have a mixed retail and residential use. And from that, and what the applicant is representing, their parking right now, based upon square footage of retail, conforms to the requirements. You can calculate, you can calculate your parking requirement in a number of different ways. One is square footage of the space of the retail. One, and with regard to residential, number of deadroom units. And or specific to this, to the use that you have, so that sometimes you can get a smaller requirement for parking if you are a small professional office. Um, as opposed to based on square footage.
Right.
But I think you, you would, your testimony from our, from our professionals as to, you know, the maximum calculation, I think you'll hear that the maximum calculation is based on square. Based on that, they're saying, okay, as to what you, what you require that an offsite, they don't have an obligation to do anything offsite because they're conforming onsite with their parking requirements. But I think the way to think about it is that they're meeting the standards for the zone. They're not asking for any deviations from what's permitted, so they would be entitled to put in any retail use that complies. Rich, do you know off the top, would a bank be outside? Is this retail one or two? Is there really any difference?
I, I just wanted to clarify, um, based on the agreement regarding, it says, commercial work which shall be provided utilizing one space for two hundred fifty square feet of gross floor area regardless of commercial use.
Okay, so that's, that's the standard.
I'm sorry, what was your question regarding a bank?
It, wi- with regard to the retail users that could potentially occupy this space. Is it anything retail, or is there anything prohibited within this zone? Responding to Sherry's question, trying to understand, um, you know.
Could a restaurant go there? Could, I, could any?
Starbucks.
Yeah.
But, but, Rich, do you know?
So, yeah, um, it should be outlined.
Yeah, I'm looking through the ordinance right now to give you that. Um, I mean, I understand that the parking is, is sufficient according to the square footage. But I guess my question would be in terms of a traffic study. I would think that the traffic would be very different if it was, um, depending on what the retail use is. And, and I'm not quite sure how we could understand that without knowing. Yeah, so the, um, permitted uses in this affordable housing zone, um, they're similar to what's permitted in the business zones existing. Um, so restaurants, retail, um, personal service establishments, first business service establishments, product service establishments, business offices, banks with no drive-through services, professional offices, indoor athletic, exercise or recreation facilities, and childcare centers are all permitted uses in this zone.
Are there any specific exclusion that I don't, I don't remember how it's written?
Um.
Does it also say if not permitted, specifically it's prohibited?
Correct, yeah. If it's not permitted, then it's prohibited. Um, there are some not permitted, uh, retail sales um, and rental of goods, um, such as the storage or display of goods outside of fully enclosed buildings, um, loaded vehicle sales, lumber yards, auction markets, and drive-through uses. Private garages, home occupation, and drive-through services are all not permitted in the zone. But generally, anything not permitted is prohibited.
So, so the real issue then for the board to consider, since there is a cap on, in a sense, what you can require. I think it was, what was it, for average, one per two hundred square feet?
One per two fifty.
Yes.
Is there any, is there any retail use that's permitted that would otherwise in another zone require more parking than based on the one per two hundred square feet? I think that, that may be an issue.
Not a disorder.
Not my question. I, I realize that you're capped, I'm just trying to do a comparison because if there's no other retail use that, that comes near that or is higher than that, then, then, then it's completely, it's out of the.
Deliveries may also be an issue depending on the retail.
So I, I think what you push up against here is that those are completely accurate observations. In fact, the, the, the traffic caps were set and set. Some users would generate ten times more, which would be a Crowzers, which as far as I can understand, they'd be welcome to put in this space. So however, our ordinance doesn't differentiate between them. And so while the analysis would be different and the impact would be different, you wouldn't by right have the ability to require anything further, whether you knew or didn't know. And so I, I think that that's the problem. Because the, the applicant is conforming to what we require. Um, and throughout, and I don't think that we require anything more for a Crowzers per se than we would require for, say, a, uh, any other retailer.
And there's no additional, um, uh, so what I'm looking for, nothing additional was, was, came out of the, um, fair share housing agreement that would impact these decisions. There's no other, um, they don't put in the other, I'm, I'm, I'm drawing.
So, so here's what happened, and I think it's really important when you evaluate what this is. What happened was there was zoning in place before we did the overlay zones. And so we maintained the retail use on the first floor consistent with what was there before. And added the apartments on top.
Right.
We, we had to figure out the parking, and the site is challenged in terms of parking and, and layout, and it just is. Um, but at the end of the day, what we wind up with is exactly what you had before, but with apartments above. So imagine the apartment's gone.
Yeah.
Imagine just first floor retail, and if they elected to only put the minimum parking, you'd have the same level of parking in the back. So by putting the residential parking largely underneath, you disposed of it, and the standard is what's given.
Right.
Did I say that wrong?
I think so. Follow me along.
Okay.
And, and the underlying zoning before was B one.
Mr. Chairman, just for a point of clarification, doesn't take away from my testimony or your concerns. Uh, I just want, for the record, the columns are sixteen inches, not eighteen. I know it doesn't make a difference, but I just want to clear the record up that they're sixteen inches, not eighteen inches wide.
So it's eight.
Yeah, a- as somebody that's hit a column in a parking garage, I know that I never went back to that spot again.
Understood.
Um, i- if there were a way to either eliminate some, or to clearstand it all, I think it would be a far better parking, um, arrangement for your residents.
Understood.
Thank you for the clarification. I, I know you didn't like the answer, but you got the answer to your question.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else have any other? Please, Spencer.
Um, I, I have some concerns about deliveries, uh, for two reasons. Uh, one is if the county denies you access. One is if the county denies you access off the county road, the only way to enter or leave the parking lot would be through CER, correct?
That's correct.
So people get lots of, for example, Amazon deliveries, and those trucks are sizable, but I'm sure they would fit in your parking spot because they would take the box trucks. But I, based on what I see for the alley, the driving, it would be difficult for a truck to do a K-turn to come in and then have to leave via CER. So I, I don't know if you have a solution or if you have.
We, we make, as we said earlier, you would come back if that was the issue.
But just, just to your point, we have, we have, we have thought about that.
Preview, instead of having the aisle, you know, come from River Road, you basically leave yourself somewhat of a
Like a hammerhead.
Hammerhead at the end, so that a vehicle could turn in there and use that extra pavement space to do your half K-turn. So you'd leave, there may be 20 feet of that aisle on the parking lot side, so that you could utilize that space to turn around. And obviously eliminate the remainder of the truck.
So you're not trying to make the K-turn within the 24-foot drive aisle, you have that additional space to pull your vehicle into and back up and make your K-turn.
I have, I have a second question.
Could, can I just, so, but we're not talking about that because as we've kind of cleared up before, if they don't get the approval from the county, they're coming back. And so, because that's the reason I asked the question, because I wanted to understand that. But there are other issues in terms of the way that the garbage is, is working. Do you have more questions about how it functions?
I have another question about the parking area. You mentioned in the tandem parking garage area that you would put bollards between the, the head of the parking area and the storefront or the back front of the store, correct?
Along the sidewalk that we showed earlier.
So if you were to have deliveries and you were not able to somehow work with your architect where this stairwell is to create access to the, there's a cap. How would you get your materials from a delivery truck through that barrier?
Well, it wouldn't be a solid barrier. I just suggested something other than bollards for visual, but when you put bollards in, you don't put bollards on folks outside. You're putting a space that just tries to fit a car through it. So for this case, we have tandem spaces, you're probably talking about if you did bollards, maybe one bollard in front of each parking space. Not enough room to get between the car between them and, and get to the building. So you'd have adequate space, you almost would have almost an eight or nine foot on center between bollards of openings for deliveries to get through if they had come through, either through the vehicles or the parking area. So it wouldn't be a solid fence or a solid barrier because obviously you would have to have gaps in it for exactly that purpose, that there was delivery to have to get through it.
But you wouldn't be able to do it where the, where the columns are, so you wouldn't have access to each spot because those columns would get in the way, right?
They wouldn't be able to wheel their
Right.
Goods down where the columns are, correct? They'd have to pick another spot where the columns were not.
Do you feel there's enough space where if two cars were parked side by side to get through a a delivery?
Well, I think that's why we're looking at being able to relocate, there's the current kind of sidewalk.
Right, right. But my question is, if that is not possible, what's, do you have another solution?
I, I think we almost have to figure that out. Have, have to find a way to make that work because I agree with, with the chairman said, what you're saying is that in the event everybody's home, these guys are going to try to make it between two cars and they're just going to scrape everything and hit mirrors and everything. So it's just not, you know, whether you wouldn't do it, you know, because you have a conscience and you might go around it, these guys are just going to wheel the closest point that for me to be like the chairman had said. So we're going to have to figure out a way to make that work so we don't have a situation. It's not going to stop them from going in between cars. But at least if you have, if you have a clear path, you could at least give them a, a route to, to avoid the cars.
But, but this was another good idea that was just mentioned because you have that walkway down the one side. If that moves to the center, now you're really getting everybody focused on getting straight through the middle, which would perhaps be the easiest path.
So this, this walkway here, do we shift it towards the center?
Just put it right in the center and then have the doors close to that as possible. If you create the best path, then all these alternatives that are suboptimal, that, that those won't be the ones they use.
Yeah, that's a great, great point. You put it in the middle, you kind of feed into all the retailers, not just to the south side or the west side. And you're feeding really to one retailer where somebody else, I'm not walking all over there, I'm just going to touch through the cars.
Yeah.
But you put it in the center.
Right.
The visual will be there to say, it, it's more inviting to your point of where the delivery is as opposed to navigating towards the east side of the building.
Would there be the ability for a truck to unload a pallet back there depending on the retail that it's delivering to? If it's a restaurant or?
If we move the, if we move that walkway as the chairman mentioned to the center, we had a six-foot area, there'd be enough room there to get a pallet into the store. Again, we don't anticipate that, but obviously we have tenants, as far as I said, but there would be enough room there. If you put that in the center to unload a pallet, it means they have a pallet jack or something, get it down the drive-off, let me get it down that walkway.
How does the garbage truck? Because this is commercial, you have to have your own garbage service
Correct.
For the entire building, not just the retail?
I know what's required, but that's, that's our intention to do garbage for the entire building.
Okay, so, so the borough garbage truck is not coming in here?
Correct.
Okay, so how does that, how does that work in, in terms of, how do they enter? Do they back up? Do they K-turn?
So again, going off premise that this is the plan that this board is reviewing, come in off the River Road, basically a, a front load. You pick up the garbage, back up a little bit, and make your turn to come out on CER.
That couldn't be easier.
No, that's why we really like the access to the road from all the, you know, other locations.
So it's going to be contained, there's, is the dumpster. We already talked about the size and the others.
Correct.
Is there going to be a separate dumpster for, say, recycling, that's in that section also? Yes.
You're welcome.
Are the residents going to have to walk their trash out to the dumpster or do you have like some kind of chute that they put their trash down if they're on the third floor?
No, they still have to walk it out.
Chairman, any other questions? Either Mr. Alba or Mr. Tuckler? Or did you just? Yeah, I'm just saying with you.
Yeah, let's do that.
Thank you, Chairman. And then the big news report, it says what the kids tell who you are, why you're so qualified.
Certainly. Good evening for the record. This is Steven Zara, the phone. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been practicing as such for 25, 26 years in the state. I have been qualified here in the borough of Carahaven as well as in excess of 400 other planning and zoning boards throughout the state. In addition to that, I'm an affordable housing special master. So I have the unique role of having participated in dozens of settlement agreements throughout the state. So I'm very familiar with the affordable housing climate and regulations in the state of New Jersey. Moreover, I'm extremely familiar with the subject property. I've been on or pass it. I regularly practice hot yoga with synergy with across the street from it. So I've lived in Carahaven for a long time. I've been past countless settlements of times. I'm very familiar with it and I'm very familiar with the settlement agreement. I did have the opportunity to work with Karen Rule's office when we were going through the settlement and the terms of the settlement and the zoning and you know, originally it's interesting because originally we had proposed an all residential process for this. It mixed use was something that the borough somewhat preferred on this site. So it was exciting to be part of that process and come to the final culmination and the project that you have before tonight, which was a result of the settlement agreement and the two affordable housing needs to be created in conjunction with this project.
I wasn't sure where your qualifications ended and your testimony started.
That's it. My testimony is going to be very brief on this, Chairman.
Does anyone have any questions about this application? Very good.
So this is a really easy one for me from a planning point of view because this is a completely conforming application. So what that means is the uses that we're proposing, the mixed use are all going to be from some of the uses that are permitted as of right in the AH zone. The residential units are all permitted. We are seeking literally zero variances in conjunction with this application. The parking, the layout of the parking, the tandem parking, all that program is a very specific ordinance. The AH ordinance goes through, really in painstaking detail, that the tandem, when it deals with the tandem spaces, it says that the units have to be, they have to be assigned to a single unit. When it deals with the affordable units, it indicates that those units have to be two-bedroom units and they have to be available, one of them to a low-income unit, one of them to a moderate-income unit. That's right in your ordinance. So there's been a lot of thought and backgrounds to get this project to where it is, and that is why we're able to come to you tonight with a completely conforming application. So you know, statutorily, we meet all the requirements in the AH zone, and more importantly, this is a result of a settlement agreement that the borough entered into with Fair Share Housing Center, I believe it was in 2020, which fortunately for the borough is able to insulate you from further affordable housing lawsuits. So it becomes a very important project from an affordable housing perspective and a planning perspective. But I am pleased to say that through that process, which was a long process with a lot of professionals, as Mr. Wolfson had indicated earlier, your, your professionals are involved, our professional team was involved, but that is, you know, all that background work is what brought us tonight to produce for you a completely conforming application that produces 12 market rate units. The count on those is actually 10 two-bedroom and two one-bedroom units with a 12 market rate, and they will be rental units. The two affordable units are both two-bedroom units, one will be a low and one will be a moderate income unit. And again, that is specified in this, in the, the plan.
I'm going to ask you to go through that one more time because it would be a different numbers before.
I know you did, that's fine.
So there are 14 units in total, two of them are affordable. Both affordables are two-bedroom units?
Yes.
And what are the size of those two units? Are they the same size?
They are. They're both rated V5 on your architectural plans, and they are 863 or 864. Eight sixty, I think it's eight sixty-three, it's eight sixty-three or four.
Okay, so we have 14, two of them are affordable, they're both two bedrooms. Now we have 12 left, and the split of those is what?
10 two-bedroom and two one-bedroom.
With regard to parking, you had mentioned that the, that the ordinance actually required that they be tied to units. How does the one-bedroom park? And how does that work with tandems?
So, I don't know, but I understand your question.
Do the one-bedroom get two parking spaces?
I believe the way the ordinance is written, that's all units have to have two parking spaces.
It's true, they all have two.
Yeah, and that's in the ordinance, it says all units have to have two parking spaces.
Including the affordable?
It says all units, so I don't think it's.
Okay.
So I am moving further on the record. A nice way to wrap up my year.
This is a component part of the plan by Judge Russell Jones.
Yes, it is.
Okay, the town immunity for minutes for the loss.
It did, absolutely.
Nice going.
Smart.
Good boy. Mike. So with regard to the units themselves, this building from the exterior has a lot of nice features. The apartments themselves, I'm not really familiar with how, from a planning perspective, we try to make sure that the interior of the units is as suitable as the exterior to attract the type of resident that, you know, would that would make these nice units. There's been some changes in terms of the sizes of the units. The building's gotten a touch smaller, which we haven't talked about, but how do you, from a planning perspective, decide how big a, a unit should be if it's a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom in terms of meeting the market from a planning perspective to make sure that this project is successful?
The market rate units or are you asking about the market rate or the affordable units?
I, I, I think I have a pretty good idea of what happens with the affordables, I mean the market rates.
Okay, so I'm really going to defer that question to Mr. Allback because, yeah, that's a market, that's not really a planning issue.
Probably answer your question. Okay.
So I'll let, I mean, if you want Mr. Allback to answer that now, Chairman, or?
That's, that's fine. You leaving?
I'm not.
Yeah, again, Ron Allback, yeah, as indicated before, we have, as a company, we have typical standards for our one-bedroom, one- and two-bedroom market units as far as what our desirable floor plan is as far as square footage is. When you have a situation like this where you're, you're kind of forced, if you will, into a footprint by virtue of setbacks, by the way the, the ordinance is written, you're left with what you're left with, so to speak. So if our typical building model as a company is that a one-bedroom is around 1,000 square feet and a two-bedroom is 1,200 square feet, that's a typical number we use. That's what we strive for. When you have a situation like this where I told you earlier, you, you place the units and you get seven units per floor, it's really what you're left with as far as what size units are. So if the units end up being smaller than our typical 1,000 square foot unit for one bedroom, they're smaller. And if they're, you know, two, for 1,200 square feet, if they're on a corner, sometimes corner units will be bigger because just by virtue of the way they're situated on a corner. This, this building doesn't really have a whole lot of the, the typical ins and outs of like elevator shafts and mechanical work they have to work around with, with different sized units. But our model as a company, bless you, is 1,000 square feet for one bedroom, 1,200 square feet for a two-bedroom. And obviously that varies depending on the building footprint where you go, but that's our general model. And we don't get too far from, until you get into like a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom, which we don't have.
So that's kind of a happy medium in terms of the ability to, you know, have a reasonable rent and reasonable construction expenses to make the project successful?
That's correct.
So in this case, are, are all your bedrooms 1,000 or are they some smaller?
There, there's some that are, they vary in sizes. Do you look on page, I think it's page four of the other schedules?
That was somewhere.
Yeah, there's a summary chart, it talks about what size units are. So you have one bedrooms. For example, there's an 884 square foot, one bedroom, obviously less than our fifth one. But there's a 14 square foot, so two bedrooms. If you look into the left corner to the left of this residential planning diagram, you can kind of see like in the front left corner of the building, you have the big unit, and it's virtually, virtually the way it wraps around the stairwell and pick up the extra square footage. A small unit. The building is, the unit's in the middle. Okay, that's our typical units. 1294, but like I said before, we strive for 14 feet. That's a unit that just, it's in the middle, it's square, there's no obstructions. The ones that are larger typically take advantage of, again, behind stairwells, behind elevator shafts, and they end up increasing its square footage. So if you look at the four corner units, if you will, they're larger by nature than our typical unit by virtue of where they are in the building. For example, you have the left-hand corner, takes advantage of not having a walkway, so he picks up 100 square feet there. The one in the upper right-hand corner, he's able to extend that into where the elevator shaft is or adjacent to the elevator shaft, so he picks up square footage in there. The two front units wrap around the stairs, so they pick up square footage by virtue of where they're at. And then you back into the fact that we're capped at 14 units. So the footprint is what the footprint is. It's not like we have a big overall site that we say, okay, this is in a gray area, great market, and we have a blank slate, so let's make the bedrooms, you know, let's make the units bigger because we can capture more rent because it's in a different market. We don't have that luxury here because of the constraints on the site. 14 units, you got setbacks, and you don't have anything we can fit in the building itself.
But all of your two bedrooms are in excess of your standard?
Well, I said the one in the middle, which is more like, is 1284, it's 80 square feet. The other ones, like I said before, exceed it because by virtue of where they're at. Would they normally be a three-bedroom? Probably. In, in another building, those, those corner units are most likely to be a three-bedroom.
And they're not a three-bedroom here because of the parking requirement?
And the ordinance, I believe. I believe the ordinance doesn't, doesn't permit three-bedrooms.
Okay, so to the extent that you're in excess of what your typical standard is, it's by happenstance and it just happened to be laid out. Why didn't any of that square footage get into the one-bedrooms? I know there's only two units, but they're both below your standard by over 100 square feet.
And, and again, I, I didn't, the architect, I will bring in every architect next time. I didn't do the layout, so I'm just telling you what our company standards are.
And, and just to be clear, I, this project is, you know, it's, it's a different project for varying. In the end, you know, apartments are good, right? So we're providing an alternative housing resource for residents, both existing and new. And it's important that they be successful with the parking work, but also that the unit sizes are what people need. And so that's specifically why I'm asking. I realize that you only have certain things that you can do. But I do wonder if 1,000 is what you typically want for a one-bedroom, you know, why we have? But I do wonder if 1,000 is what you typically want for a one-bedroom, you know, why we have.